The special city council meeting of 20 March 2020 is now called to order. I ask if you have not signed the clipboard when you came in, please sign that before you leave. Also, if you have cell phones, please put them on vibrate. A roll call of members. Danielle?
Councilmember Steve Strand. Councilmember Susan Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markath.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, also those that will be watching our council meetings on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. You may notice our different seating arrangement this evening due to the recommendation from the CDC of six-foot distancing recommendation. They only have one announcement at this time. Our next city council meeting is planned to be held on Tuesday, March 31st, at 5:00 PM here in the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Okay, hearing none, if we'd all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, we have a few bullet points there we are going to address. First of all, I'd like to give a little introduction why we are, or everyone knows why we're here this evening, but at this time, not only us, but everybody is navigating uncharted waters. The purpose of this council meeting is to be proactive and disseminate information to the city council and also the general public relating to the coronavirus. On July 4th, 1776, our founding fathers adopted the United States Declaration of Independence, and there was three inalienable rights, were life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. First and foremost is life, and we are now witnessing a worldwide threat to human life. People look to the government or leadership during war times, natural disasters, and also medical emergencies. In these times, we have read and heard of the war against coronavirus, also known as COVID-19. Our community, our county, our state, our nation, and the whole world is at war to stop this virus. At this time, we do not know of a case of COVID within our community, but we, as a city government, need to be on guard to protect our residents. Most of this protection is to stress the importance of social distancing, self-quarantine if you are sick or been in contact with someone who was diagnosed with COVID-19. This will help stop the spread of this disease. We have witnessed the closing of public facilities, dental clinics, restaurants, bars. The sole intent is to stop the spread of COVID-19. We have all heard and witnessed many federal and state mandates relating to COVID-19, which we must adhere to. I would like to thank our city staff for their work, proactive work and actions that have implemented some of their decisions and safety measures, which we'll be talking about this evening, as they follow up on their occupations and their association with the public. Throughout these times, we need to allow the facts to rule over the fear that may flow as this too shall pass. The first bullet point is approval of Resolution 20-12, bank resolution for checking account. And I'd like to turn this over to Danielle.
Yes, as some of you may be aware, I just found out today that Wells Fargo has closed. Their drive thru is no longer open. The bank in town is no longer open now. And that is where the city does the majority of their banking, the liquor store does the majority of their banking there, too. And so when I called and spoke to somebody there, they recommended either going to Fergus RDL every day to drop off our daily deposits and get our payments to the liquor store. And that really doesn't work for us. And so I would like to open up an account at Mints of the National, at least for now, so that I have somewhere to put the money every day, especially the liquor store funds. That's my main concern now. So this is just a resolution allowing me to open up a new checking account there for the liquor stores.
I move that we adopt Resolution 20-12.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Is this just a temporary thing?
The closing?
No, this account with...
We'll see. I mean, I may need it for other stuff down the road. But for now, this is what I'm thinking for.
Do we have other accounts at Wells Fargo?
Well, the city...
Investments?
I mean, the city's main account is there.
So we're not dropping the account, we're just...
No, no, my plan as of right now could change next week, but this way, at least we only have to go to Fergus RDL once a week instead of every day. So it's just kind of safe. I'm running Fergus RDL every day.
Any more discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried. Second bullet is city ops respond to COVID-19, and both Don and myself have a couple of comments there. First of all, before I turn it over to Don, I'll just let you know, I have been in contact with several businesses within the city of Pelican Rapids, several facilities. I've contacted West Central Turkey's, also the Pelican Rapids School District, Pelican Rapids Senior Living, and where the residents are confined to their room, they have been most of this week. Sanford Health, I talked to them, and they're having COVID testing here at their location here in Pelican Rapids for those who qualify to be tested. Essentia Health has testing on Highway 10 in Detroit Lakes, up by Walmart in Menards area. Contacted Lake Regional Electric. Dakota Smiles, Dr. David Ditch here in Pelican Rapids, both those dental clinics are closed at this time. Also, Chief Police Jeff Statham and I attended Ringdell ambulance service, their employee training as it relates to how they handle patients who have COVID, or assume they have it, and how they handle all their other calls. I did also talk to Larson Funeral Home, Jade, who was with us here this evening, regarding this epidemic that is sweeping our nation. Don, would you like to respond to how the city departments are responding?
Daily, we usually add discussions amongst the departments.
Don, could you use a microphone? I'm sure they probably won't be able to hear you. Thank you.
So, almost on a daily basis, with Brian stopping in, it gives us an opportunity, and with Jeff being at City Hall, an opportunity to just have general discussions about things. But for the most part, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it now. We will have, hopefully, a lot more information at the next council meeting, more of a thorough report on things. But for now, all the departments are practicing, stepping up and practicing their personal hygiene and cleaning practices, wiping off counters several times a day, following Minnesota Department of Health guidelines. And so there's a lot more of that going on. You may have noticed that we've installed sanitation, or sanitation, hand sanitizer in the entryway there, and in another location, the one in the entryway is for the general public. We have another one inside the building in the foyer, a small service door for employees. And city councilmen, too, just every time that you guys come into City Hall, we would suggest that you use it, and when you're done at this meeting tonight and meetings going forward, use it when you leave. I'm continually monitoring CDC, Minnesota Department of Health, and other information sources. I'm getting probably, I'd say, 50 emails a day that I'm going through and kind of monitoring, to monitor stuff, and to also what information would be good for city employees, but also for our business community. And as a result of the monitoring of stuff, I have posted COVID-19 information on the city website. I don't know if the councilmen have been there and looked at it, but if you go to the city's website, right on the very front page, there's information that people can click to links regarding different aspects of it. It might, the one is to the main CDC website, but there's a lot of good information there for the community, whether it's the business community, families, whatever it may be, but their website, to start looking for information there. There's another one that deals with utilities, water and sewer utilities, and the effect of COVID-19 virus on them. That's good information. Another one's guidelines for businesses and employers, and another one, I think, on there right now is a link to, there has to be 20 different languages in COVID-19 information, so that's another good link that people can go to. I've been pushing out business-related information to the chamber so that they can use their broadcasting to the chamber members out regarding business continuity, operations, and planning and stuff like that, too. So you guys might have been seeing that if you're chamber members, what's been posted, been put out there. And also, I've put together and provided a notice that we passed out to every city employee as it relates to COVID-19, and kind of how the city's looking at sick leave, or sickness or illness of, not necessarily sick leave, but illness of city employees and what they should do, should they think they have symptoms and act accordingly, so that we can get them checked out, or they can get checked out, so we can determine what has to be done in those situations. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Like I said, the next council meeting, we hope to have even more information on what we've done as an employer and as a city, and where we're going, some of the decisions and things we're talking about, now that we haven't decided on, will be shared with city council at the next council meeting. So that's...
Don, would you like to comment on People Service Response? People Service manages our water treatment plant and wastewater treatment facility, and Don got a hold of them and their, with their employees, how they are going to react to this potential.
Yeah, it's similar to what all of our departments are doing in identifying what happens if it gets to a situation where we have employees that become affected by it, either themselves becoming, become, I guess, come down with COVID-19, or a family member does. And the way we're treating that is kind of, you know, talk, having discussions about identifying who would kind of take over through cross-training or whatever, some of the responsibilities, or can we do this from, can that person be set up to do this stuff from home? People Services is looking at it the same way. They're looking at all of the facilities that they operate, and what would they need to do, and make sure that they have the things in place should the operators here have to self-quarantine or something. Have they got the ability to, from People Service standpoint, to continue to operate from, you know, bringing another individual in? So they're looking at their contingency plans, or cessation plans, or whatever, too. A lot of the things that these guys can do right now, and they've always been able to do it, is monitor stuff right from their smart devices and from their home, and depending on what the situation, or what alert might come up, they can solve it right from where they're at, reset stuff, look at what has to be done. If it becomes an issue where they have to go out to the plant, you know, they are making sure that they've got the things in place, that if they have to bring somebody else in from another location to make sure that they can operate our plant, that's what they're doing.
Any other questions for Don? Mr. Foster?
Are you preparing a letter for essential services?
I am basically, not necessarily a letter for essential services, but I'm in, one of the things that you guys will be looking at the next council meeting is the city's pandemic plan. That's one of the things that we've been, kind of, I've been going over and looking at and getting with department heads on, just to make sure that everything's in order there, and that's one of the things that we'll have council looking at next time, as well as sharing internally what our plans are to deal with, you know, going forward if things get worse for the community here. So essential services, I mean, right now, and what we plan on doing is keeping everything running that, you know, we need the street department, we need city hall staff here, you know, so doing all the things that we typically do. At this point in time, we have not shut down anything or altered anything, except for internally, keeping employees safe and the things I had previously mentioned. But right now, at this point in time, nothing's going to change as far as hours of operation and that type of thing. The library's probably the only one that's, you know, revising hours or closed, or whatever the case may be, but city facilities...
Well, what I'm, I'm more referring to, like, we've got to have our street department and People Services, I'm going to assume will take care of themselves there, but we need our police department, street department, probably a couple of people up here. But if the governor decides to shut things down, these people still got to be able to get out and keep things going, so we need to have some sort of essential services letter or statement so they can go about their business, you know, that...
One of the things, in the form of a written, some type of written, if you look on the city website, below those links, there is a, you know, what's the status of every facility in the city right now? And, you know, that's kind of, this is changing for us on the fly. Every time you turn around and you print something, something comes out that makes you revise or look at what you just said, you have to change it again. So the city website has, and I've provided it to the press, too, here's a statement, here's the state of all the facilities, and I'm going to continue to look at that, updating that. Like I said, we don't have any, if we get to a point that we're going to have to look at revising hours, closing facilities, something like that, then there will be something written and put out regarding that prior to it happening. So we're all, we're going to be proactive on trying to get information out, and especially as it relates to the city facilities, as proactive as we possibly can, but, you know, sometimes we don't see it coming until it just, all of a sudden, it hits us. If the governor should decide tomorrow, executive order closing all city halls, we have to react to that, you know, kind of on the fly, too. But there isn't anything out there like that right now. There are communities we're aware of that have closed their city halls, and believe me, that's a discussion we're having, you know, at what point do we do that? So, but we'll be as forthcoming with information and as proactive as we can, getting the word out prior to something like that taking place. And it'll be in written form. It won't be a letter to any particular individual, it will just be blasted out there via notices, webpage, Facebook, that type of thing.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Don. You can stay there, though. We'll go into the next bullet point, approve emergency management team.
Yeah, so basically, part of this whole thing, and the proclamation that you guys are going to be looking at, as well as the actions that we're talking about, or the things that we're talking about here at City Hall, obviously, we don't want that to be one person making those decisions necessarily, and so what I would like the council to do would be to approve an emergency management team, and it doesn't have to be a large group, but right now, the ones that have generally been involved in these conversations has been myself, Danielle might be Chief Statham, Mayor Fraser, and then also Brian Olson from the Street and Parks Department. And I think just for the sake of having, a group being recognized as the emergency management team, an established one, is important, especially since we've got the declaration we're going to be talking about next. But right now, I would recommend that the council actually officially recognize an emergency management team, being made up of myself, the mayor, city streets superintendent Brian Olson, and if another elected official would like to be on that, just leave it at that. That doesn't mean we won't be having conversations as we go forward with decisions that we make related to facilities and all that type of thing, but we're not, we don't plan on including any other department heads at this point in the actual team. The discussions, yes, to decide on things, but, to help us decide on things, but the team right now is Brian Olson, myself, the mayor, and then if another elected official would like to, otherwise, that will be the team.
Any elected officials want to become a part of that management team?
The management team will look at the meeting, I don't know how often, but it will be basically discussions, maybe on a daily basis or whatever, whatever we need to do.
And the meetings will probably come up whenever they need to be.
It could be, yes.
What kinds of things will this management team be deciding on?
If we're going to be looking at changing, changes in operations, facilities, that type of thing, it would be the team that basically would look at having discussions and deciding on what types of actions to take based on basically where we're at and what we get, what we get sent to us from CDC, Minnesota Department of Health, that type of thing. So really, the decisions surrounding, well, to some extent, city services and the facilities.
And if, I mean, if City Hall does get closed down, it may have to be done, if we pass this resolution, declaration, on my telephone. Anyone volunteer to be on that management team?
And again, it's not necessary, I mean, if you guys are fine with the names that's called out, that would be fine with us, too.
So at this point, we're looking for...
The meetings are before 2:00, I can do it.
Say again?
The meetings are before 2:00.
Well, some might be, some might not be.
Yeah.
It just depends on what we're faced with, because, like I said, you know, things change for us every day. We get new information, you know, one day or most times, that would make sense to try and have them, you know, first thing in the morning, just get together, and if we need to, first thing in the morning, to go over stuff. But if something comes across the, you know, email, or whatever the case may be, however it's sent to us, that would suggest that we need to get together prior to the next morning, then it might be something that we have to get together in an afternoon. I mean, that's so hard to say, I don't know.
I don't really care to have a spot on the board or whatever. I've worked on an emergency management team in a city board as a chairman. Maybe you're right about that occasionally, it's a matter of, we've got a meeting like 15 minutes, you know, in certain situations, you don't have any control over timing, but yeah, I'm still, that's just, that is an important piece. Not that you'd have to attend everyone, either.
I mean, yeah, there may be members that can't attend.
When you're able, then, you know.
And that's a very good point. I mean, even though there would be three, potentially four of us, you know, it's not that everybody has to get together. If they can't make it, they can't make it.
Or if one of you come down with COVID-19.
Right, right.
If that didn't happen. There needs to be redundancy in any emergency management team, anyway.
So, yeah, Steve, if you want to do it, and then, you know, we can try and do our best to always make sure there are morning gatherings if we need to, and like I said, it won't be necessarily, you know, every day, just to keep everybody in the loop or to have some discussions. I can tell you right now that we want to get together Monday morning to start them discussions, but...
A lot of your meetings would be driven by, if we ever see some cases landing in Ottertail County or even worse yet, after the event. Then you guys would have to decide.
Can we add your name to that, Steve? Okay. So a one, two, three, six-member team.
Six?
So is there a motion to approve...
I thought it was four.
Danielle and Jeff were only...
Okay, okay. Councilman Foster, Mayor Fraser, myself, and Superintendent Brian Olson.
So is there a motion to approve the emergency management team?
I need to approve appointments.
Second. Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried. Next bullet point is discuss the declaration. You all have that, you were emailed that early this afternoon, I believe, and there's also a copy in front of you this evening. This is a resolution that many cities throughout the state of Minnesota have already adopted. Ottertail County has adopted a similar resolution. And the primary benefit of this is to be proactive, where if there is funding available, we can access that funding in a short time period. We mentioned about possibly not meeting here for council meetings. If we adopt this, we can hold electronic meetings using Wi-Fi. It waves a three-day posting of a public city council meeting. So it also circumvents the public bidding process. If we should have something major come down and we have to spend over $150,000, we can go ahead and replace or repair without going through the bidding process, as if you know the bidding process takes quite some time. So in basic, this is a lookout for the residents of Pelican Rapids and to use their money in a diligent way, seek this funding and carry out business or bills that have to be paid, day-to-day, week-to-week, and we can still do that without meeting as a city council and a three-day posting of a city council meeting. Are there any questions on the proclamation and declaration?
Everybody on the chair, three.
Well, I've been skimming through it since I sat down. I haven't been home all day, so...
One of the things that I'll point out, I wanted to mention to you that, one of the things that this does is it allows us to, I mean, it's a very important aspect of it, it allows us to start, if we need to, start looking at ways to basically do council meetings, planning committees, meetings, different ideas, via electronic meetings that are supposed to be able to do not through meetings.
My only question is, does this feed the fear? Say again?
I thought about that as well, but it's basically what every other municipal town, maybe not Fergus Falls or anybody, if you're watching everything all day long on TV, that's what these cities are doing so that they can be asking the feds for help.
It's just mutual action.
Yep.
Because Fergus did pass a...
Fergus also...
...frightening decision last night.
I didn't hear locally, but I've been watching the other cities, bigger cities, that they know they can handle, if they have a major health break, that, you know, the financial thing, for one thing. Freezes up, I guess, Don, to be soliciting funds or grants or loans.
If we were at the point where we were locking down doors and everything else and passing the, we're passing just a collective measure, like I stated earlier, at this time, the way we operate is far on a day-to-day basis, other than being more expensive, the MGH guidelines on social distancing and personal physical hygiene and stuff like that, nothing has changed.
One question I've had is, does this allow us to do anything beyond what the state is going to do? If the state decides to shut down, I mean, the school is closed, the library is closed, and those, that should not be our call, I don't think, because they have their own boards and their own things to take care of, so, you know, the state is shutting down restaurants except for takeout and all kinds of other things. Does it allow us to go beyond anything they're doing, and is that going to benefit Pelican Rapids by doing that?
I don't think there's anything that we can do. I don't think there's anything that we can do to override the executive order as well, so if you shutting down businesses, you know, we decided to, you know, you don't have to shut down, you can't, you can do that, but also if you doesn't shut down certain businesses in recent, that certain businesses should be, I don't think that this gives us the authority to do that either, other than our own facility.
Right. And there have been many city halls shut down at this point?
If we at least limit, well, obviously, we limit to the lobby, that's the way we operate regularly anyway, but people are still allowed in the lobby. They don't have to call in or anything. Probably could have.
No, I think that that's a fair amount of.
The other question I have is that by doing this, I highly question whether we need to call meetings without three-day notices.
Yeah, no.
Are we going to destroy our own credibility by doing this?
No, no. It'd be something pertaining to an emergency where it would be less than three days, otherwise we could, we could still post through having a meeting.
Well, even the post, all, all the meetings need to be posted, regardless of the emergency special, whatever, so.
Does it alleviate the need for a three-day wait if, for example?
For an emergency.
For an emergency, or like, 27 cases popped up somewhere close, maybe we needed to figure out. I don't want to mention state or town, because that is not what happened so far, no cases in town.
No.
Right.
You know, if something blew up that we need to get you guys together, you know, we had something to the facility that was an extremely expensive fix, and we needed to get you guys together right away to look at it, and we didn't want, we couldn't wait three days, we just basically created a condition to get you guys together, and then we started to call them, question, need to be ready for that. Not that we're going to do it now, I don't know, but it basically makes it pretty quick and helps to get you guys together and make sure that. But as far as the other typical meetings that we have, the danger meetings of all the councils and all the commissions that we have also, et cetera, we're still going to post just like we always have in the same fashion.
Right. Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 2020-11?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-11.
Your second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, we'll have a roll call vote.
I have a question. Do we want to put a date on this or when this is going to end?
You, basically, this proclamation's gave in effect until you guys pass another proclamation terminating it. And this is so open-ended right now, if you don't know if this thing is going to go on for one month or eight months, but this terminates upon you guys actually passing a later proclamation.
That's stated on number six on the second page, Steve.
And I really don't think you want to say a date.
No, no.
You may be coming down to do another proclamation. And there's no reason to, because you have to end with, I think there'll be very clear when you say it's on.
Okay, roll call vote, Danielle.
Councilmember Ballard.
Aye.
Councilmember Mark Craft.
Aye.
Councilmember Foster.
Aye.
Mayor Fraser.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Is there any other, we're just, this discussion is just about the coronavirus, is there anything else we need to discuss about?
I'd like to make a comment. I heard a couple of times in this meeting about the library being closed, and in fact, it is closed, however, it's open by appointment and curbside drops. I just want people that are listening on Channel 14 to know, you can still use the library, you just need to call, make an appointment, tell them what you need, it'll be ready when you get there. That's all.
Good to know, thank you. Any other information we need to know? Okay, seeing no other information at this meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
Yeah.
Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, meeting adjourned.